Melody, just a mic check. Are we good?
We are.
Thank you. We'll get started in just a moment. All right, I think we're ready to go. Welcome, everyone. I'd like to call to order this Board of Commissioners' regular meeting, October 27, 2020, at 6:30. We're starting on time. But first, before we proceed to the next step, I'd like to have the town clerk restatement about our visibility.
Thank you, Mayor. So I just wanted to go over a couple logistics with regards to the meeting specifically related to those participants that may not be very familiar with Zoom. So your main controls in Zoom are on the lower left-hand side of your computer screen. These are your audio and video controls. Please make sure to mute yourself when you're not talking and to keep your video on as we are streaming live to YouTube. Next, I wanted to review some guidelines as to how the board members will participate in the meeting. The mayor will be calling on each board member individually to provide comments and votes. If you would like to speak at any point during the meeting, please raise your hand. Please be mindful of your background when raising your hand, as you might have to bring your hand forward so that we can see it. Also, if we are in the middle of a presentation and you are raising your hand but not being called on, please feel free to speak up. Most importantly, we want to make sure that the board members are all able to participate in this meeting fully. So please text me if you have any technical difficulty so that we can suspend the discussion. Next, we need to call the roll call. Please indicate if you are present. Mayor Ronald Pappas.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Brenda McMillan.
Present.
Commissioner Ann Simpson.
Present.
Commissioner Tracy Westlich.
Present.
Commissioner Pedro Maury.
Present.
Thank you. All members are present. Mayor, I'll turn the meeting back over to you.
Thank you, Melody. Appreciate that. Next item, we'd like to move to the sermon opening. And but before we do that during, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. But after that, we'd like to recognize a long moment of silence, if you will, for one of our moment here in the town. A young lady ensign, Morgan Garrett, had passed away tragically in a U.S. Coast Guard trainer plane this week down in the Alabama area. We want to recognize that passing, and we'd also like to let the family know that we're applying the flags at half-mast in their honor for this. We'll continue that for the week, at least through services. And so I just wanted to make sure that we recognize that, so if we could all stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Very good. Thank you, everybody. Our condolences out to the Garrett family, John and Jennifer, as I have a common friend that knows John, I've met him a few times, and so heart goes out to him. So appreciate you guys participating then, allowing the town to take the position to lower the flags, town manager and troops. Appreciate that, and thank you for that cooperation. Okay, next item up on top, here's the adoption of tonight's agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? Seeing no hands raised right now, we have a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Roll call vote, please. Commissioner Maury.
Aye.
Commissioner Westlich.
Aye.
Commissioner Simpson.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Aye.
Very good. So the agenda is passed for tonight. We'll proceed forward. The, as I understand it, Melody, we had a mistaken comment on public, and you've taken care of that?
That's correct. We did receive a public comment. However, it was someone requesting information or to speak with a staff member regarding a property. Town manager Wells followed up with this inquiry and has resolved it.
Very good. Okay, let's move down to the consent agenda. Any changes to the consent agenda tonight? Seeing none, I'm going to ask for a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
So moved.
Thank you. Okay, we have motion to adopt the consent agenda. Roll call vote. Commissioner Westlich.
Aye.
Commissioner Simpson.
Aye.
Commissioner Maury.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Aye.
Very good. The consent agenda is approved. So we're going to move down to recognitions. We have Dina Sabinski is going to do a presentation on recognition of the Lions Club, the tree donation. So if she's not on here yet, we'll wait for her to log on. There you go.
Hello, all.
There you go. Hi, Dina.
Hi.
Do you have a presentation tonight?
Yes, sir. I'm so happy to acknowledge the Waxall Lions Club. If I can get my screen to work. There we go. They were gracious enough to donate two river birch trees at our 12-Ma Creek Trailhead across from Town Creek Park. They came on Monday, October the 19th, and planted the two trees as a donation to the town. So they did all the work with our, for one of our park staffs, Mr. Jimmy, was helping facilitate that installment. So I wanted to give a wonderful shout out to a community partner, our Waxall Lions Club, for their volunteer project of planting two wonderful river birch trees that flank our Trailhead sign and for growing for our future in that spot. So we're very thankful and appreciative for their service in this. I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
I'm sorry. That was my fault. That finger. So we're appreciative. I had the honor of speaking with them earlier this year, and they are really a good service organization here in the community. So we can appreciate their efforts to help us out in the park. Certainly, I like more volunteerism like that. It's great for the community.
Yes.
However that got started, I'm sure it had something to do with you. So I appreciate that.
Well, we love partnerships. So I'm always looking for community partners.
Partnerships are great, and so I appreciate you nurturing those all along. So I think we'll have two very beautiful trees, and we'll make sure we monitor them so they are healthy and don't get blown down in the wind or something as we newly planted kind of stuff, storms. So appreciate that. And if you can convey that back, get them out on tonight, if you can convey that back to them, we appreciate that. So thank you.
I will. Thank you.
Very good. Drop down to presentations. I don't see on mine that we have any presentations tonight. And so we'll move down to old business. Old business, item number F, is the approval of Resolution 20200018. And so you accept the offer to sell the real estate at 216 West North Main, that is the Nivens Building. And so town manager Jeffrey Wells, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, everybody. To facilitate the sale of town-owned property at 216 West North Main Street, the town has utilized the negotiated offer advertisement and upset bid procedure as described in the North Carolina general statutes. The town has received an offer for purchase of said property, also identified as the Nivens Price Building, in the amount of $1,230,000. The town received the required 5% deposit of the purchase price from the buyer and thus started the upset bid procedure. The board authorized the property to be advertised for the upset bids at the October 13th regular meeting. The notice ran on October 15th, and no upset bids were received within the required window. Since no additional bids were received, the Board of Commissioners may authorize sale of the property. Both the attorneys for the buyer and seller have been working diligently on all the paperwork required for closing. We feel confident that with final action from the board, the transaction will close tomorrow. Some special thanks are in order for us to get to this point. A very special thanks to our attorney, Mr. Buckley, for getting us into position to close this expeditiously. Also, special thanks to our public services staff for clearing out the leftover stuff that was in the building. And an additional special thanks to our interim downtown manager for coordinating some of the communications between the town and the buyer and being on site when needed. The recommended motion is to adopt Resolution 2020018 as revised, accepting the offer to sell certain property owned by the town of Waxall. Thank you, Mayor.
Very good. Thank you, Jeffrey. We've come a long ways, guys. In short order, we've been able to accept an offer on it, working hard with the attorneys, Mr. Buckley and the buyer's attorney. We were able to demonstrate that we are a business savvy organization. We got through the ups and downs of any transaction like this stuff. And I think it's very important to recognize the town attorney for his efforts in getting this over the finish line. So Charlie, appreciate all the efforts. I know town manager is working very, very closely with you in this every step of the way. I know you've been working with the buyer's attorney as well. It was a nice clean deal because of all the ahead-of-time preparedness. So I thank you very much for that.
Well. Thank you, Mayor. It was a pleasure to work with the staff in getting this done and with yourself. And let me add that I believe the resolution says authorize the staff to close the deal. I think we need to also add, and the mayor, since the mayor is going to be signing the documents.
I think we had that in there earlier. As we were reading the resolution.
And just.
It has the mayor as one of the listed people that the mayor, town clerk.
If the mayor is listed, then we're okay.
Yep, he's listed.
We're good.
Very good. Thanks, Charlie, for pointing that out. Yeah, I think we have revised that, but we're adding it this afternoon to make that complete. So thanks.
Excellent.
One quick note. We had, the resolution number is 2020018. That's what manager Wells provided. On the agenda, it's got an additional zero in there. So just take that into account when you're making the motion.
So it's 20200018, correct?
Only two zeros.
Only two zeros between the, before the 18.
Should be two, not three.
Not three zeros in there?
That's correct.
All right, we can resolve that easily, obviously. So we'll go back. So what we have before us is the, we'd like a motion to approve the transaction. And so do that motion.
Can I ask a quick question before we do the motion? And it was just brought to my attention just a short while ago. Commissioner Westlich had asked a question before with the sale of the building, that it not be torn down? Is that something that is being considered, that the building itself, because of its nature, would not be torn down?
Let the town manager.
It is not part of this particular sale, but our zoning and design standards protect the validity of any building that would go there. The design standards for the current building, or if something happened to that building and it had to be rebuilt from the ground up, we feel like we have the design standards that would allow it to go back. Honestly, it would probably be better than what it is now.
Okay. All right.
I'm sorry. There's no protection of it as the historic designation in the wording?
It is not a historic landmark, no, but it is protected in our current UDO by our Form-Based Code Design Standards. And then in our new LDC, if adopted, it will be protected by our design standards and that as well as commercial building design standards.
I think what Commissioner Westlich is getting at is the protection of the aesthetics and for it to remain similar to what is surrounding it, so that we have a uniform appearance to the standard, at the very least, to what is there now.
So in the sale, that is not part of any documentation. It's just the sale of the property. But as far as that goes moving forward, the zoning would reign supreme on how the building looks.
Is the zoning worded in such a manner that it protects the facade?
Yes.
To remain as it appears now?
Well, you wouldn't want it to remain as appears now exactly because of the vinyl that's on the front. But I understand what you mean, that, yes, if they had to renovate that building facade on the outside or build it new, they would have to build it like the other structures within downtown. That is part of the Main Street zoning district and the commercial design standards.
So the previous agreement we had with another company, I thought we added something in there to protect that building. Is that correct, Charlie? Do you recall?
Well, that was a different type of project. That was a downtown development project under the statute, and we had a public-private partnership in the development of that property. This is just a simple sale to a, under the private negotiation subject to upset bid. And so it's a totally different statutory process that we're operating under. This is not a downtown development project.
And so if it was a private owner that was selling to a private buyer, the same thing would apply. Zoning would control how the design of the building is moving forward. I feel very confident that our Main Street zoning are currently in the UDO. I think that portion is good, too. I know that some people are not a big fan of Form-Based Codes, but, you know, in this particular case, for this particular property and where that's located, that's good in the UDO, and we've got that covered. When we get to adoption of the LDC, it's covered in there as well.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to make the approval of this. So do I have, I guess we're at a point of roll call vote?
Somebody needs to make a motion.
I think we made the motion, but, all right, so we'll make the motion again, to be clear.
I'll make the motion to approve Resolution 2020018, accept the offer from Magnolia Hill Farm LLC in the amount of $1,230,000 for real property located at 216 West North Main Street, Nivens Price Building, parcel number 05113027, and authorize the town staff, attorney, and mayor to finalize the sale of the property.
Okay, we have the motion up. Roll call vote. Mayor Pro Tem.
Aye.
Commissioner Maury.
Aye.
Commissioner Westlich.
Aye.
Commissioner Simpson.
Aye.
Very good. Thank you. The motion has passed there. So again, congratulations to everybody who participated on that. That was a very intense deal going all the way through, a lot of documents. So appreciate all of that. Okay, next up, we've got the approval of the master transportation plans, more information, and some report from Matt Huber. Matt, you're up, if I can get you on the screen. There he is.
Okay, good evening, everybody. So I'm bringing back what was previously presented in pretty good detail at the work session. And so tonight, I'm hoping we'll be able to finalize master transportation plan and adopt it so that we can put it into place and move on to building the improvements we know we need to make. So a quick overview, we developed the master transportation plan to provide a new model that helps us identify, prioritize, and track all of our planning improvements in a more deliberate and transparent fashion. What I'm hoping to accomplish here is that we keep this in front and center with all our discussions, and we continually update the information that we pull from when we make our decisions that are informed with the most up-to-date information, because changes at the state level and their programming and certainly funding, we've seen how they've impacted our efforts. And also in the private sector, they move at a different pace as well. And so when we're trying to understand where should we be focusing, oftentimes, we have reports that get outdated pretty quickly. And I'm hoping by following this new model, we'll be able to keep everybody informed and be clear about what our funding priorities are and how we're going to program improvements of interest, both administratively and to the public. Again, we've got a lot of previous studies, downtown area plans, corridor plans, NC-16 has a plan, long-range transportation plans. And it takes a long time to put them in, into place. And by the time we really get to the point of trying to understand what they're telling us, a lot of things have shifted. And then we're always playing makeup to a degree. And so hopefully, this provides a better resource for our planning and action. It does include a very well-developed mapbook section. A lot of our information is regularly updated in terms of the streets that we maintain, traffic counts that we get from our own studies and from CIA analyses. All these things need to keep, need to be brought front and center each time we make these decisions. And so the mapbook itself, while it's a part of the report, it's more of a living document. It's not always, even if we adopt this plan, the mapbook will always be changing. It's just a reference point, but it's important that we include it in the overall report so that we're getting the most up-to-date information when we consider changes going forward. So I think the two key features to this concept of this report are a report card, which is a means to basically grade what our current conditions are in terms of traffic volume, safety, other developments, even if the costs of improvements are feasible. We try and compare those in a red, yellow, green kind of visual aid means so that we can get an understanding of how well we're doing as it goes forward. And so if you remember back to the work session, there was a lot of red on the screen saying, hey, we need a lot of work in a lot of areas. And I think that's bore out by our conditions right now in terms of our traffic congestion and inability to get around town as easily as we would like. And so moving forward, as we start to take down projects, and even at the state level, the development level, and our own projects, we'll hope to see those reds turn to yellows and greens, and that will show us and the public that we're following through on the improvements we intended to make. And again, if that stays red through a couple of iterations, then we know we need to kind of step up our efforts and provide more immediate progress, again, to keep ourselves accountable and to be able to show, hey, here's where we were a couple of years ago, and here's where we are now and where we want to be going forward. So that's kind of a more subjective way to show it, because a lot of these kinds of projects don't necessarily equate with one another. We try to break it down into simpler graphic terms. The other, I think the major component of the report is the prioritization. And what we did here was through our old plans, through our current understanding of project that we have a need for, and through the public input sessions, we categorized a number of improvements across a lot of different modes, not just vehicular, but also bicycle and pedestrian projects that had value and worth. And we provided, created a matrix that weighted them and scored them in order to get them as easily comparable to one another. So we're not trying to make decisions on too distinctly different. And really, I think we had about 16 projects to start from for this first round of what we might want to consider moving forward as we do contemplate a CIP program coming next year. And basically, at the end of this prioritization exercise, we got two different tiers of projects that were split down the middle. And the concept is we would be making real deliberate conversations with the top-tier items and how best to move them forward and fund them and program them for completion and leave the lower-tier projects alone until they're, we get better information that raises them up to consideration, or we move other projects off the top tier and make room for new ones to come up. And it's continually a changing process, and it's a very difficult kind of atmosphere to manage across years and years that these projects take when we know this funding has to stay intact over years as well. So in terms of trying to make this a sustain, a sustainable program, um, that helps make all our decision-making a lot easier and and kind of separate uh, the confusion that that can often occur, is what will happen going forward is, we'll we'll accept ideally the the first prioritization tiers and make our C I P decisions based on that. Then anytime we we propose to change the tiering, either projects uh, have been completed and moved off, or there's enough reason um, to change something from a bottom tier to an upper tier, or maybe we don't have it in the in the prioritization at all, and and we want to get a feel for where it falls, before we would um, move in that direction, we would rescore and and bring the the uh, prioritization back to you for adoption to make sure that it's very transparent, our our processes, both internally and to the public, to to ensure that we're not um, you know, playing a shell game, so to speak, or or making changes that are not in the light of day and and moving away from already agreed-upon um, priorities. So again, I would say probably every two years, we would want to update the plan on its face to keep pace with our C I P. And that, you know, this this first round will will be a good measure of how well we think um, that's going to function. I think it's, it is a a good document that provides a good foundation and framework, but will continue to evolve as we get more comfortable and as we see how it's performing for us. One thing that that was pretty clear, and I think you'll see when I move over to what the prior prioritization tiers um, fell out this this um, round, is that the bike and ped projects, even in this ability to try and um, weight projects and and be able to compare them uh, to one another, they still don't perform well with the traffic improvement projects. And so, I think my recommendation, right out of the gate, is is that these bike ped projects, because they showed up in the in the lower tier across the board, we should move them over to strictly within the pedestrian plan update, which is already scheduled, and um, and have a separate kind of funding considerations for how we want to adopt and move those forward, separate from the traffic ones. It just, uh, I think it'll become clear as we as we move forward. So this is really the crux of of what I'm asking uh, everyone to to kind of agree to tonight and and move forward from. Uh, we we see the two different tiers across all the projects that we contemplated with this with this report. Um, tier one, the highest-scoring project was N C sixteen and N C seventy-five. I think that mirrors our own internal understanding and the public's uh, sentiment as well. So in in my mind, the way these numbers fall out help justify that I think we're in the right direction, because these projects that came to the top are projects that I think have the most value and merit for us to put our resources toward now. And the ones in the second tier uh, are really ones that we shouldn't try and get too caught up in until we've we've um, got these first several out of the way already. So, the second one on the scoring list is crosswalks across N C sixteen, specifically at locations where the subdivisions are on one side of the street and the sidewalks on the other, businesses are on the other. Again, it scores highly where we would want to move forward with getting um, the ped-activated lights, rapid flashing beacons, and proper crosswalks, proper sidewalks, and and handicap ramps in those locations, so that the the pedestrians uh, are well provided for and safely across what is one of our highest uh, volume roads uh, for traffic. Third becomes the parkway, yes?
Matt, I have a question here. In tier one, I don't see the intersection at um, Greve Byram and sixteen. Did that not make the list? Because
No, and that's a good point. Thanks for pointing that out. Basically, what 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 is kind of a disclaimer to this is, all the already funded projects would not be, are not considered, right? Um, that is funded, and so it's already on its on its schedule, um, such that it is with with the U T's kind of current issues. But um, things like the widening of sixteen, the the grade-separated crossing of seventy-five and the railroad, those are are in the mapbook and they're on the list of 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 things when we look holistically at what's going on in the town. But when we talk about how do we want to consider improvements, the the ones that are already planned for and funded are are distinctly left out. And and that can be a cause of confusion uh, when when you think about, well, wait, we've got these things that need to be done quicker, and where's that? So thank you for for bringing that up. Back to the tiers, the third tier is is the parkway in the east direction, the north from from sixteen over to Waxall, Marbin, Indian Trail Road. This one's broken into two different sections. One is just what's within town limits, and the other is what is outside of town limits and really not subject to uh, so simply the town making a decision to do something with. But it does show up, both those uh, sections show up as a as a need to focus on. Um, and and we will move forward in in moving it up the the step, the state uh, transportation improvement model, because this one's so big in cost and outside of our limits that we really need to partner with D O T and and likely developers in that corridor to bring this to fruition. But it will be a a working item from now until it's it's in place, as far as engineering is concerned. Next to the the first leg of the extension is is a widening of Broom Street, specifically below where uh, the widening of sixteen is programmed from N C D O T. That's, it's widened out the four lanes until the parkway, and then it stays its two-lane configuration. So i- it would be incumbent upon us to um, program improvements to add a center turn lane so that through movements can continue while turning movements get moved out of the way and provided for with a center turn lane to keep the flow uh, in that uh, prime through direction uh, un-unobstructed.
Hey, Matt, so Todd had something to say. Todd, did you want to go ahead and make your comment?
Yeah, I was going to ask him, why is Howie Mine's sidewalks always so low on the total poll?
Yeah, and that's
A lot of people use it as dangerous.
Right, right. And 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 so it's, it comes in because, one, it, there's already an existing sidewalk for it, uh, albeit substandard. And and that's where the difficulty of trying to get these ped projects to compete well with the with the transportation projects, we, I haven't really found a great way to talk about them in the same sentence, because they do different things and they both have value. But when we talk about like a safety and a traffic flow and things like that, a lot of categories are are null when we talk about a sidewalk, where a roadway can have sidewalk with it, but a sidewalk doesn't necessarily have roadway improvements with it. And so, it it's kind of what the scope of the project does, almost um, negates its value when we try and compare projects that can do more than one thing at a time. Uh, but it's no less in important to have those conversations. That's why I think if we if we move forward, we take the sidewalk projects like Howie Mine, Pine Oak, and and the Greenway, and we talk about them in the context of other uh, pedestrian projects in the master plan for pedestrian, uh, then we do try and make them compete with the with the transportation. And I think a decision will need to be made, what kind of monetary set aside should be provided to keep sidewalk and ped improvements moving forward, but not always suffering at the hands of the traffic, the vehicular improvements. Does that um, does that make sense? And and to be clear
Yeah, but I just know, these are so dangerous.
Right, agreed. And and we're also
They're uneven and
Yeah, we're um, we're resubmitting for a a C D B G grant to try and get that sidewalk project funded um, over the next year. We've we've tried it previously and and didn't get enough responses in the survey, but we're going to try it again, because I I agree, we we need to to address that one. It's a D O T facility, but they don't focus on sidewalks, so I don't think anyone else is going to do it if we don't.
Right.
But i- if we can get the grant, that's that's free money, that then we don't have to compete against every other project. So i- in some way, shape, or form, we know we've got to address that. And and hopefully that comes back up for conversation. If we don't get the grant, it comes up as a part of the pedestrian plan update.
So Matt, so if I understand what you're saying is that the sidewalks don't break high in this because of the context that this is a transportation, more roadway type of um, matrix, if you will, as opposed to just a pedestrian only?
Yeah, and so we we kind of learned this as as we went through the process. When we, as much as we tried to create fair categories to to uh, compare what a project from cradle to grave entails in terms of design, right-of-way, cost, any um, environmental issues, when you do that and you compare a road project to a sidewalk project, there's there's not enough, unless we artificially weight them, which I I want to try and shy away from, they they just don't compete um, comparatively across the the same playing field. Um, and and so, I was hopeful that that wouldn't be the case, but it almost, in order for it to to change, we would have to artificially manipulate, I think, um, the the categories. And that kind of flies in the face of the purpose altogether, which was try to put them all on a same playing field. And I think uh, I've found out through the process that some of these playing fields just can't be made even. And and we've got to uh, continue to to work on how we want to have these conversations when when I can't get data to help support
So by by prioritizing this, this would help us in terms of getting grant or outside funding. But if we wanted to take down a sidewalk project on our own, that that we could, I guess, make that decision, even though it's
Oh yeah, absolutely. I I think that's where that's where more value can come, when I can show you a tier of of transportation projects and a tier of sidewalk projects. And we try and think of them in their own right and not competing against one another. This way, it was a, it was a, it was a good effort. We did it because we got a lot of feedback from the public um, that there were projects of of interest. And and why would we, right out of the gate, want to uh, not consider them? But I think what what we found out in trying to to accomplish things across the the multi-modes is is we really weren't doing um, the sidewalk, the ped improvements, and to a lesser extent, the bike ones, which I think we know we need to to move forward in um, as a as a facility that the town will have a better quality of life, if we can engage those other mechanisms. But well, I think we're so far behind in just roadwork. Um, these other ones, they need to stand alone on their own, and let's consider them and the the amount of of overall funding um, separate from 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 the roadway projects. And and again, that's, it we're lea- that we're talking about it now in this context, already kind of proves to me that that this is helpful to to bring up in the context of this report. And whether we follow it this way or a different way, we are talking about the importance of all of these, and how best to make these decisions um, so that one doesn't continually get ignored. Because we obviously have needs in both areas uh, that that we've not caught up to yet. And I think we know, and and Jeff knows, we've, we need a major cash infusion to to catch up, much less break new ground uh, across
Well, I mean, as an example, we have like Waxall Parkway Extension East, and the co- I think that's, we'd be pretty cost prohibitive if we had to fund that versus, we could probably do a sidewalk project on our own. So, you know, I think it's good to have it prioritized in terms of, we needed to vote for funding, that we have this um, in a document. But I, but, you know, we need to be mindful of what's what's most, where the priority lies. But I think, again, if it's something that we're doing um, with our own money, there's other things I think that we could get the low-hanging fruit, if you would, maybe do a sidewalk project instead of, you know, we're not going to be able to tackle, I think, the Parkway East on our own, so.
Right. And and so, I mean, again, this is the, this is the first piece to the C I P. This is a partner piece.
Right.
This helps compare it, not not really talking about dollars, except in in the uh, in a in a in a sense where we weight them and and not try and say, oh, projects that are too expensive, we shouldn't take on. What what this can do is, okay, we're not going to buy out the whole Parkway East, but we will provide enough funding that we keep moving it up the step, or we we move the design or right-of-way acquisition anywhere we can to to continue to move that closer to a uh, completed or or funded project instead of continuing to let it languish on its own. And we look at some of these other projects that maybe don't necessarily have the value, but hey, we think they're cheaper, and and we 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 focus on those instead. I think this and the C I P combine together to make the the real um, defining programming for the town, because these are multi-year documents, and and we'll have them in front of us in black and white and paper, and what we've approved and allotted um, and agree that that's the direction we need to follow through. These projects take so long, we we can't have a, take a a short view of them, hurry up and get them done. And then we think about something before, you know, like, unfortunately, the tap grant is a sidewalk improvement that's gonna have a great impact to downtown, but it's been so mired in in the issues with C S X and D O T funding, that we we can't show, we can't prove that we're actually making progress. We basically, we are on paper, and we're, it's there, all the effort is there except for the actual construction. And that's what's so frustrating for me is, well, we 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 don't look at the projects on this list that are funded, but a lot of effort has been has been made uh, to get them funded, to get them on the schedule, and to and to be able to move on to bigger and better things. But we're not seeing the fruits of that labor because of issues we've got with the with the funding model and the state's um, issues with with its cash flow and and now COVID impacts. And Matt, just to be clear on that for everybody who's watching and observing this, this is certainly a prioritization chart. We know as things develop around us, these things can move around. And it seems like, you know, we've got all these projects that are tied to some type of participation financially from others. And so, again, when we talk, you know, there are new developments every day, as you know, some of the conversations, both on the Waxall Parkway uh, east and west sides, we've had some new developments in conversations anyway with those uh, even as late as this week. So again, these are not necessarily what has to happen first, but these are chosen priorities, and they will move around based on our ability to do them financially internally, or something else that changed the financial picture from any of the participations, namely N C D O T or and or private money. Right, absolutely. And I think what this does is, i- it it continues to keep them in front of us, so nobody's surprised or or confused, so to speak. But what they represent is is months, years, very thick email chains and and folders full of of effort to to move them, to at least get them to this point, and if not, to a point where they're not even on the list, because they're out in the field and they're done. And then the whole process just starts over again. We're never going to be done with 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 building the town and and improving to meet the needs as we grow. Um, but the previous model that I've seen is is we lose sight of some of these longer-term issues over staff changes at local level, the D O T level, uh, the board changes, and all of a sudden, there's new new impetus behind projects that that uh, may may have more value. Uh, but we can't lose sight of of the long-term goal, and that's that all this work needs to get done. Let's make sure that the funding is is locked up and in place, and we've got the political will to follow through on it. Um, I've got a lot of designs that I inherited, and there was no funding to them. So it's a great idea, and they're great designs, but I have no ability to 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 turn them into anything real, because the the political will was was gone. So as we look back, just finish the 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 top tiers, Waxall Marvin Road to Bonds Grove Church, this is the one here, because again, the, what we're trying to plan for is not just what's within town limits. We also have a a commuting, uh, major commuting traffic, and it is affected by things just outside our sphere of of town limits. Um, that's not to say we shouldn't be thinking about them. And and while this is on while this is on the list, it it almost will get an asterisk because the county submitted this with its critical intersection analysis, and it scored well enough that they will move forward with having their own grant to address this one. And and so we won't have to necessarily put any resources or or further brain power toward this, but it does show we weren't just thinking specifically locally about the town, but when we can consider improvements, we consider the 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 scope of the area is a little bit more outside of town to be sure we're not thinking too inside our own our own box. But again, that one is not one that we will see in the CIP discussions because it should be managed externally. And and I think that just shows that we are a part of a of a bigger whole. The county plays a role and the state plays a role. And so all of those things work together, and this this report does speak to that as well. Then we talked about Waxaw Marvin Road at Pine Oak Road. This was when we first started the small transportation planning efforts. This one scored highly in the context. It was a safety project that DOT was likely not going to to identify anytime soon. It's just an a an odd angle that the Pine Oak makes with Waxaw Marvin Road, and it's a safety issue, but the volumes there and the 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 safety, the crash data doesn't move it up into a real hierarchy of of where these other projects have been scoring. But we also know that it's 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 small enough in a scale that we could take it down a little quicker than most, and we're finding that these grants now are so backlog that they put construction five to 10 years out, even though they've identified they're important enough to to fund now. We're not going to realize the improvements until much further along. And so the fact that the the bridge at Waxaw Marvin Road is programmed for replacement, and this is a a detour route that's identified, scores it highly enough that we want to consider. And when we talk with NC DOT about replacing the bridge, where do where do we want this intersection to 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 fall into place? Again, just because it's in the top tier doesn't mean we're definitely going to find the funds, but it's we want to talk about programming it before we talked about other ones on the lower tiers. And then finally is on the top tier, the Parkway Extension West, which, again, it it's more in line with something the town could could do on its own because it is within town limits, and we know the widening of 16 is going to stop at the Parkway. And we know now that the grade separated crossing for the CSX siding is going to to provide a means to easily get across 75 and the tracks to Waxaw Marvin Road, but we have a disconnected piece. It's it's not going to score high enough in the the stip, the state's funding mechanism that we'd see it done in in the next 10 to 10 to 20 years likely. And so we know if we want to take advantage of what relief that provides to our downtown traffic, trying to find a means to fund that and and bring that across the finish line in line with those other DOT improvements is is worthy and and it does score again, scores well against the other projects. I think when we look at tier two, it basically says all the things, all the other things on Waxaw Marvin Corridor Plan. We know in 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 the future Waxaw Marvin Road as kind of the parallel to 16 is going to need a center turn lane. It's going to need intersection improvements to keep pace with growing traffic, but it it still isn't at a level where it should supersede all the projects on the on the first tier. And I think that's the the basic takeaway. And I think it to me, it it kind of supports that the way we've created the matrix is is serving the process well and will help us as we move forward and and some of these projects change and some other ones come into place. Feel confident that the the rating system will will make it easier for us to not have to reinvent the wheel every time. So again, most of the the real detail information we talked about at the work session and to not bog down the the conversation here, but we got a, I think we were well understood that we were in the right direction here. And so the requested action tonight is to to make a motion to approve the plan, which is staff's recommendation or to deny adoption of the plan and potentially have to go back to the drawing board and make some tweaks. But but I think right now it's it's doing what I had hoped and and anxious to kind of move forward and start putting these these programs into play. And so that's why I brought it for you tonight for. Did I put you all to sleep?
Okay, I was I was waiting for the question slide to come up. Sorry, Matt.
Up there you go.
That's what I was waiting for. You still have the floor, Matt?
Yeah, absolutely. If if there if there are questions, I can I can certainly take them. But ultimately, i- if there are none, that is the requested action to adopt.
Any questions for Town Engineer? Seeing none. Okay, so a lot of work has gone into this. And Matt, I applaud you for hanging in there as long as you have to push all this forward. A lot of moving parts, a lot of moving people. That's a lot of great work. And so I I applaud you and your entire team for putting this together. I know it was lengthy presentation to put together and to explain. I think you did a great job explaining it. I think we all know it's a living document, as we just were talking about earlier. But we've got to keep it. You're right, got to keep it on track. Want to make sure to keep moving forward, got to make sure that we keep reviewing it to make sure that you know, priorities haven't changed or funding circumstances have haven't changed as well. So it looks like that we're looking for a requested action on a motion to approve or deny the adoption of the master transportation plan as presented. Board, do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion, a motion to approve the adoption of the master transportation plan as presented.
Very good. Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, we have a motion to approve. Roll call vote, please. Mayor Protem McMillan.
Aye.
Commissioner Morey?
Aye.
Commissioner Simpson?
Aye.
Commissioner Wesley?
Aye.
Outstanding. Thank you very much for that. Matt, you're off one more step closer.
Very good. Thank you, everybody.
I appreciate it. Okay, got the screen back. All right. We're up to new business. I remember G got the appointment of the Board of Commissioners members to fill a midterm vacancy. As some of you may or may not remember, the Board of Commissioners have been moving through the process of receiving applications to fill a midterm vacancy on the Board of Commissioners. That's term ending in December of 2021. Earlier this year, due to our friendly COVID situation, we we realized that we weren't getting the applications in. People's lives were changing around us, so we made a motion and approved in April to suspend our section B of our rules and procedures regarding this. But we've now wanted to move forward on it. And during the last few weeks, we've set in motion to garner up six applicants. And so the application period was closed at the end of September. And we did have a special meeting of the Board of Commissioners on Monday, October 19th, to interview all of the candidates. A lot of discussion has gone on about this topic. And so what I'm looking for right now is what's the board's pleasure?
May I?
You may.
First of all, I would like to thank those who submitted their names for consideration to the Board of Commissioners and hope that they will all continue to be actively involved in the town and in helping in some form or fashion. With that, I would also like to make a motion that the candidate list be narrowed for further consideration to the following candidates. Terry Nolan Range, Jason Hall, and Althea Richardson Tucker.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mayor Protem. We have a motion on the floor to approve the three names that for further consideration down the road here. So any discussion? All right, I'm recognizing Commissioner Simpson.
I too would like to echo Mayor Protem's McMillan's acknowledgement of all the great candidates that we had come forward. There's some really talented people, and I really would highly encourage those who aren't selected in this process to continue on, get involved in one of our board committees because we need you. As I've been reminded that as as a board, we have suspended our rules of procedure regarding the application process. However, I really would like to enter to the record and state an excerpt from our rules of procedure here. It's item number two. It says, after debate and discussion, the board will select two candidates from a list of qualified applicants. I believe we should follow the historical process that we've used by previous administrations as recently as in 2019, in which two of the current board members are actually followed. By making this change of nominating three instead of following the two nominations, I think it's going to lead to possible public negative perception such as lack of transparency and behind the closed door agreements. On Monday, October 19th, as a board, we met with and interviewed six candidates for this position. We've had over eight days to review their applicants, and I personally have watched our interview video three times to look over the considerations and narrow my choices to two candidates. I also know that Commissioner Morey has actually personally reached out and has spoken with all the candidates too as part of his decision making process. And so I would like to have my fellow commissioners just consider this decision of going down to possibly two candidates instead of three.
Okay, comment. I'm going to recognize Commissioner Morey first, and I think I saw Mayor Protem's hand go back up again too. So Commissioner Morey, you have the floor.
I believe that because so much discussion has taken place that it's it's important to consider all options and further explore this in agreement with what Commissioner McMillan said. I think all the candidates came through with enough that we we owe it to them to further explore and make sure that we are making the correct decision.
Thank you. Mayor Protem, I saw your hand up earlier.
I also understand what Commissioner Simpson has stated regarding our rules of procedure, but due to the COVID and the pandemic, those rules were suspended by Mayor Pappas. And in moving forward with the three candidates, it does give us a little more opportunity to question them in more detail to get further clarification, maybe on some things that we would like to get clarification on and narrowing down the topic from the number, the large number that we did have to this number that we do have now. And proceeding forward, be able to make an a more informed decision.
Okay, I'm going to recognize Commissioner Simpson again.
So as part of this motion, if we're going to narrow this down to three candidates instead of following historically the two candidate process, are we also going to set forth a special meeting so we can have another open interview with three candidates? Or are we expected to interview these three candidates individually like what has been occurring? Because I would like to keep the the process transparent for the public so they can see what's going on.
I agree that the process should be transparent and that we should have another open meeting so that the so that everyone can see exactly what's going on and be as clear as possible with our decision when we do make it.
Okay, any other further discussion? One more comment. Go ahead.
I will be comfortable moving forward with the three candidates if we can schedule a special meeting and and interview the three candidates in an open session.
I can amend my motion to include that we do interview the three candidates in a special session in moving forward.
Great. Do we have an expectation on timeframe?
Is it possible, due to the fact that we are now moving closer into the holiday season and giving the candidates time to with their schedules, that we interview them prior to our break before Thanksgiving? And hopefully by by our meeting on November 23rd to be able to vote at that time.
Great. So that's a very long motion. So does everybody have that motion? Got it in mind on where we're heading there? I'm going to go up to Commissioner Morey first.
Is there any way to possibly have that sooner than than the room at 23rd?
Once again, our town clerk would have to move, would have to contact all the candidates involved, and then you have to also consider their schedule. We have another meeting within the next two weeks. We have to consider our own schedules within that two week process. So allowing fairness to everyone, then if we can do the meeting within the next two weeks, that it gives us ample time then by November 23rd to be able to vote.
Did you have another comment?
I just wanted to echo that. I think some of that would need to depend on town clerk coordinating everyone's schedule to move forward. And and if we can do our interviews and then move forward, we can maybe set a a decision date at that point.
Okay.
Okay, so the motion is still on the floor to move those three names forward and then to go ahead and reschedule logistics. Obviously, we have to reschedule the meeting times or scheduled meeting times with all the candidates. So from that, are we clear on the motion? Oh, Tracy, do I see your hand or not?
No, I I'll just comment. First, I want to also thank everyone that interviewed. Every single one of of them showed that they had good decision making skills and and could do the job. So I do want to say that as well. I I support what Commissioner McMillan is asking for. I think this is such an important decision and and my individual discussions with everyone. I I feel like there's enough out there that we need to further interview the candidate, so I would would support that.
Very good. So we're clear on the motion to, the short story is to narrow it down to the three candidates that were mentioned and have the town clerk further schedule those times according to everybody's availability. So we'd like to accomplish that before the Thanksgiving holiday if we could. That's the goal. So I guess at this point, it's a roll call vote. So on the motion to approve, Commissioner Morey?
Aye.
Commissioner Simpson?
Aye.
Commissioner Wesley?
Aye.
Mayor Protem?
Aye.
Very good. Thank you. And I will also echo the sentiment. A lot of people put a lot of time and effort to come to us. We went through a lot of applications, some filtering. Unfortunately, some that had applied, we're not residents of the town, so we also applaud them for wanting to get involved in our community as a whole. So we've we're now reaching out and we're getting recognized, and a lot of people want to join our team, so to speak. So I will say publicly, I appreciate everyone who is going through the process with us and also appreciate those who will continue on with us. The town clerk will orchestrate this and notify those candidates, and we will go from there. So thank you very much for that. We'll move down. Last year, we had no general public comments. Correct, Melody?
That's correct.
Okay, very good. So we're going to move down to the town leadership reports. Town Manager Wells, you're up again.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm sure probably the last thing that you want to hear is the need for more meetings. But we are in the very final stages of our land development code, putting it together in final draft form. We expect to hopefully have it distributed out to the board, both electronically and in hard copy at the end of this week. And then, as we have discussed briefly, moving forward, having several special meetings, moving forward to try to digest this in chunks. As I said before, I think it's very important to methodically go through it just so the board understands it and, of course, able to make your comments and make your adjustments or tweaks that you want to see in the in the code before it moves forward. So I guess hearing what we So I guess hearing what we just heard your decision was in the prior item, we will also be reaching out as well through Melody about scheduling the first two review times. But we will certainly let you prioritize first the meeting, special meeting for your candidates. And then we'll just work around that as best we can. And hopefully we can try to fit in as many meetings as we need through the holiday season with the hopes of still staying on schedule at the first quarter of next year with adoption for it. Lastly, just one other comment in regards to Halloween. From the town's perspective, we're encouraging all of our residents to be safe this Halloween. As you're determining with your children how to go about Halloween this year, pay attention to the public health guidelines and recommendations. And let them, along with your own good judgment, help guide you. Certainly wish everybody well. You know, Halloween is a great time and it really kicks off the holiday season. Nobody gets more excited about it than my kids. So want to wish everybody a great, safe Halloween as that comes up this weekend. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Just a statement to follow up with that. We're trying to devote as much time as we possibly can so that all of us can understand every step of the way. So it's gonna call out for a lot of, all of our cooperation, schedules, whatever. We'll work around most people's schedules and we'd like to do that. We'd like to keep it on track for at least one meeting a week so we can get through it. If we get through the first page the first day, that's fine. We're gonna go through every page. We're gonna make sure we understand it. So Town Manager slash Planning Director is gonna have his hands full with questions and answers, I'm sure. But I appreciate the effort that everybody's willing to put through to bring this document forward. It's been a long time in the making and Jeff has worked diligently on it since he arrived a year and a half ago. So we have moved forward faster in a year and a half than maybe the prior five or eight years before. So Jeff, I congratulate you on bringing this document forward with all your team to make it understandable. We would appreciate certainly all your team members being available to the commissioners. So if there's any questions either during or after these meetings on a weekly basis, that we can get those addressed and move on to the next step. So I appreciate that a lot. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Next up, Ms. Dina.
Hello, all again. There we go. All right, I'm going to give you a heads up on what's going on in programming and events and some park updates. This always gives me trouble. Remember, technology and me do not like each other. Oh my goodness. Yay. Program guide. So we have our new program guide up and we're halfway through the season already. So please take a look when you get a second. It's up on the website. And how you register for all of our programs and events is through our rec desk site. Our adult classes are getting lots of notice lately. We have a full class and the second pop-up one that we made is almost full. I think we only have two spots left in that November 5th. So if you'd like to join us, go ahead and sign up as soon as possible. We also have next week, wonderful partnership with Capices Downtown. And they're going to make your own pizza with our youth. And then seniors, we have a class for senior massage so we can do some health and wellness. Also, next week, we have our family fun night. We're doing a mural and a pop-up skate night at our skate park. So this is fun for the whole family. We're gonna have prizes, some giveaways. But we need you to register. So please go ahead and register on rec desk. And we would love to see you next, not this Friday night, but next Friday night. Again, we also have adult classes coming up for our adults and seniors. We also have a youth program in the following week with our PD, community officers are helping us out, and another pottery class for the teens. We had great success last month and we're bringing it back. Fitness. So every Tuesday and Thursday, Ms. Amy is taking our citizens on a walk around a downtown area. She'd love to have more participants. So please go ahead and shout out to Ms. Amy and register on rec desk. Also, every Friday, we have yoga at Town Creek Park. So love to have you a part of that as well. Senior fitness has started. So if you are interested in that, please give the office a call and we'll get you contacted. So last weekend, so with COVID, we have had to rethink every program and event. So we had our first drive-through parade slash candy giveaway slash costume for your vehicle contest. Oh my goodness. We had over 150 cars, gave out over 400 bags of candy. And these are healthy bags of candy. And so we had lots of smiling faces, lots of wonderful, thankful community members. We also had some spectators out checking out the cool cars coming by. A special thanks to our downtown businesses and the town hall team and the parking rec team for making this happen. We're, and PD, because this is one of those, we are learning as we go. And the team effort to make a post-COVID event happen is awesome. So I wanted just to give out a wonderful shout out to the whole team and our community for supporting and being a part of a cool event. Hopefully next year, we'll be able to have our original Fright Night. But we made the best of it and everybody had great smiling faces on. So we really appreciate that. Oh, and on Facebook, there is an album of lots of pictures of all those wonderful smiling faces. Coming up this Friday is a spooky movie. So please join us. Actually, we're full. So we're going to put you on a waiting list. We got pulled up today. So go ahead and be on that waiting list. So if there's any openings, we can fit you in. Our next movie is November the 13th. But this Friday, we are going to do candy, candy give out costume contest as well. And just have a great night, fellowshipping, socially distancing, fellowshipping, but having a great time as well. Save the date. Our Veterans Day ceremony is coming up on November the 11th at 11:00 a.m. We are gonna do a in-person and virtual offering. So we stay within our COVID guidelines. And so look for more information of that coming out soon about the agenda and how to come into the venue when we're able to have that event. Also listed here is our events to the rest of the year. We are planning in short stints because of COVID. That way we can best suit the community on what we're allowed to do and when. An update about our downtown park. So gave you a preview last time about that we're working on it. I wanted to give a really brief overview of the timeline. So we're in October now. We're gathering all that information. We had an awesome field trip on the site. Next month, we're talking back with y'all, BSC, the Park and Rec Committee, and then doing public engagements, doing a survey, having a concept plan about an updated concept plan for the park. December is gathering all that information that we just learned. Coming back in January, doing another public engagement, talking back to the BSC and Park and Rec. And then at the end of January, coming with that plan and understanding the budget that goes along with those phases as well. We're super excited about this. It's, you know, it's long-term coming. And so we are just bubbling with joy of this coming about. As always, we are looking for community partners. That's how we succeed as a community. So we're looking for partners for upcoming programs and events from January into the new year. So if you would love to partner up with us, we would love to partner up with you. So please come and touch base with me or a staff here at Park and Rec. And we would love to have your input. With COVID, we are still Phase Three until November the 13th. And that's Friday the 13th, just saying. And then we are staying in this pattern until we have more information from the governor's office about the next phase. And as always, I leave you with our vision and mission. And thank you for your support. And we're excited to be able to do community engagements again. But again, we're doing it safely and with the parameters that we're allowed to work in. Any questions?
Very good, Dina. Thank you very much. A lot of work went into that as well as I participated in that little land tour over there. And I gotta tell you, it is exciting. Finally get out there and walk it, understand it. Just again, to backfill in for some of the board members as well on this, on that park project, we're tiptoeing into it, making sure that we are all in sync on the spin and the scope of work. The consultants understand that right now. And so we're gonna step at a time, make sure that happens for us. And I have tasked Dina with a very specific role in this and I won't say what that is right now. So she knows what it is. So anyway, just a joke. But we're looking forward to making that happen down there. I think it's a long time coming. It really is. So appreciate the effort and the work and everybody who walked with us, Matt and Jeff and Blair was out there and the consultants and Dina and myself, we had a great walk. It was a good discovery. So thanks, Dina. Thanks for the effort. Okay, moving on. I see Matt, you're up to bat again.
Thank you. Hello, everybody. Just some quick laundry list items. One thing that's pretty exciting, if you're as bored as I am with, golly geez, some of the work I get to do. We actually have engaged Union County. We know for a long time, we've had an issue with debris in our creeks. And the fact that these storm events, they push them downstream and they get caught up on our bridges and out in the middle of nowhere. We really can't get to them. And we've tried to figure out how do we best manage that. And we've been able to partner tomorrow. We're gonna be sending a crew of employees and county staff up the creek on kayaks and identifying a lot of down debris that the county will be able to, through a grant that they have, start getting contractors lined up to remove that debris. And so it doesn't continuously build up and create hazards in that waterway and across private properties and public properties and across the town limits. So it's pretty exciting. We've been kind of scratching our heads as how best to address that because it's not a simple task. And lo and behold, after some effort from Orion and partnering with Union County, we found a means to address that. And so want to bring that up. That one, they're going out in the creeks tomorrow to highlight it. And then we'll have a game plan about when and how we'll best address that stuff. And then subsequently, next week, if weather permits, we will be completing our final leg of this year's paving program. One of the high points is adding parking and paving Price Street at the corner of Church. Add some well-needed parking to downtown and finish off that block as well. We will be adding another parking space to East Main Street where we had to, East South Main Street where we lost the tree, but we did gain a parking space. And so that'll get paved. We're also repairing some of the parking on South Broom Street where utility repairs have left that gravel mess. So that will be looking a lot cleaner and smoother hopefully in the weeks come. The Woodleaf neighborhood has bad cul-de-sac. We're gonna finish out the worst repairs that are needed there with this contract before we come back and do more of our ceiling operations next year. Church Street gets a little bit of a patch. We replaced a storm drain there that failed. And so we'll finally complete the pavement there. And then we are looking to widen one block of McKibben at where Millview is with the business there. There, the two-way traffic really can't get in and out of McKibben at the same time and it backs up onto 75. So we're hoping to very quickly widen that so that two cars can pass at the same time without one getting stuck out into 75. And I think that's the highlights. But again, weather permitting, that will all get accomplished next week and we can move on to other things. Any questions there?
And I have a quick question, clarification on the creek cleanup in there. We've talked about that for a long time. And congratulations again on getting that project rocking and rolling, getting it out of there. Remind me of the reach north and south, or I guess that's east and west on that. How far can we reach? Because as you know, we cleared all out in the town limits or within our own reach. And if you get a traffic jam down south of us or to the west on the South Carolina side, it's like a wreck and you get a stall on the freeway. So what happens? Are we engaging South Carolina as well somehow?
I don't think in this stage right now, we're just getting the county staff to kind of have a look and understand the breadth and scope of what's to be seen in the creek. It's really hard. It's somewhat inaccessible for a lot of the stretches. So this is kind of our first go-round. And I can't imagine that one, the grant is going to cross those boundaries. But certainly conversations can be made with Lancaster County in how best to ensure what we're doing provides value. And if there's anything they need to, maybe we can partner with in that regard.
That'd be great. I think it's a great first step because we had to clean it up for not only, you know, the danger part of it because a lot of that stuff moves around in a flood. But certainly, you know, getting it picked up out of the way so you can see what you're doing is gonna really help. So it's a great first step. So kudos to you on that.
No, we got lucky. I was kind of running out of options when we made this connection. And it happened easier than most things have gone down in this town. So we really got lucky.
It's good karma. So keep up the work. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any questions for Matt? Anybody? All right, Matt, thank you very much. We're gonna move down to any comments or questions from the board commissioners? Any hands? If you guys want to get out of here tonight, I love it. All right, seeing none. On that part, we have nothing on the closed session agenda tonight. So I'm gonna ask for a move to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn the meeting. Roll call vote. Mayor Portem.
Aye.
Commissioner Morey.
Aye.
Commissioner Westlock.
Aye.
Commissioner Simpson.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it. And we will keep moving forward. Charlie, thank you very much for all your help this week. I know we put the tag on there. But I appreciate that. Jeff, Melody, thank you all. Melody, if you could just keep on going on the logistics of getting those people together again. I appreciate that. Thank you, everyone.
Be safe. Be safe, everybody.